Testing 1, 2, 3. This will be the October 21st, 2015 City Council meeting.
Everyone, I'd like to call to order a regular City Council meeting in the city of Satellite Beach, October 21st, 2015, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Vice Mayor Montanaro. A prayer, a moment of silence, and a pledge.
Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. Please guide us in the decisions that we make for our residents. Please watch out over all our armed forces deployed around the world and bring the men and women home safely to their loved ones. And also, Lord, longtime volunteer John Baker and his family lost Sadie, his wife, and another longtime volunteer in our city. Please be with them during this time of grieving, along with any other residents in our city who've lost a loved one. Amen. If you'll join me in the pledge.
The pledge begins with the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll move on to Agenda Item 3, and Councilman Breimer will make a presentation or proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We could have Carissa Marie come up.
Mark, excuse me, will you stand next to that podium and turn the microphone in your direction? Thank you.
You guys can turn around and face the audience here. We have a special proclamation that we'd like to read to you tonight, and thank you guys for being here. Whereas, dysautonomia is a group of medical conditions that result in malfunction of the autonomic nervous system, which is responsible for essential bodily functions such as respiration, heart rate, blood pressure, digestion, temperature control, and more. And whereas, forms of this autonomia include rare or orphan diseases such as multiple system atrophy, pure autonomic failure, and common diseases such as diabetic autonomic neuropathy, and there is a lack of awareness about these conditions among the medical community and the general public. And whereas, this autonomia can impact people of all ages, races, and backgrounds, and whereas some forms of this autonomia can be very disabling, and this disability can result in physical pain, social isolation, stress on the families of those impacted, and financial hardship. And whereas, increased awareness about this autonomia can help patients get diagnosed earlier and can help foster support for individuals and families coping with this autonomia. And whereas, we seek to recognize the contributions of the professional medical community, patients, family members, who are working to educate our citizenry about dysautonomia in Satellite Beach. Now, therefore, on behalf of the mayor, Frank Catino, of the city of Satellite Beach, the mayor hereby proclaims Dysautonomia Awareness Month effective this first day, 21st day, October 2015. Yes, would you like to make any comments or educate our public about this in Satellite Beach and that sort of thing?
Sure, I can just say, first, Chris is my son, and he's 13 years old. He's been diagnosed like five years ago to go to get his dad's nose. Julie Hoesley is a really good friend, a new friend of mine, and she happens to have the same thing. And so is her daughter, Michaela, she is 12, and which I'm very concerned with. This is a dysfunction of the autonomic nervous system. It's an invisible illness, and they attack the frame-like parts of the body, whether you can have asthma colitis, and then they feel like fainting, they feel different than what part of the body is attacking, that's all the different things that they feel. And they only have autonomy, there's always things for dysautonomia to maintain. So between Julie and Michaela, we're very grateful, thank you very much for recommending that.
Well, we thank you for coming to Satellite Beach and educating us on this, because this is pretty rare, and it's always, it's always nice to be brought to the scene. Thank you, Christopher. I have two copies of this, this, the other one is for Julie, yes it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'll move on to Agenda Item 4, which is citizens' comments, and this is for non-agenda items. The floor is open. Here and now, I'll bring it back to council. Council comments, who would like to start? Lauren?
On the 10th, I attended the beach cleanup that Ethan Shoda and his mom Kathy do at Pelican Beach Park, and I gotta tell you, it gets bigger every month. You know, I got there, and I don't know how many people were waiting in line to get their utensils, so I just kinda snuck in, grabbed a bag, and went off and did my thing. But, you know, they do a great job of keeping awareness at Pelican Beach Park on cleaning up our beach, so kudos to them. I also attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting on the 12th, and that was a good meeting, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I have nothing.
I attended the EMO course, October 9th through 11th. Very, very good learning experience, especially for someone as myself that was there, and a lot of different subjects talked about, got to, talked to a lot of people from other cities, hear some of their issues, and some of the good things they're doing. As I said, it was a very good course. I did bring back an extra set of materials, so I do have those. And I also attended, with the mayor, the superintendent of schools meeting that we had Monday night. Yeah, very interesting guy, had a very good outtake, I think, on a lot of the stuff. Wish we had more residents there to hear him talk, but I think he is very accessible from what he says, so it was good.
Thank you. I have nothing, before I was at those meetings with him, so I got that report. Any further council comments?
Yes, sir.
Here and now, move on to city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. On October 24th, the city will be holding our second annual food trucks and movie on the Green. You can purchase dinner from the local food trucks, serving from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the DRS Community Center parking lot. There will be music and fun kids' activities prior to the movie at dusk. The movie that will be showing is Maleficent. On October 25th, the city's Halloween happening will begin at 5:45 PM. A spook parade will walk west from the Satellite Beach United Methodist Church to the Teen Zone, where there will be activities such as music, dancing, refreshments, games, and prizes. On October 31st, beginning at 10:00 AM, you know, you can stop by the Satellite Beach Dog Park for the Halloween Howl, promoting doggy fitness and fun with our furry friends with a costume parade, complete with judges and prizes. Halloween Howl bandanas and goodie bags will be given to the first 100 dogs that are registered. Bring a five-pound bag of dog or cat food for a chance to win a raffle prize and support the Brevard aiding shelter animals project in the Space Coast Kibble Kitchen. Some informational items that the city manager wanted me to share was the utility relocation bill is back for consideration by the Florida Legislature this session and is now Senate Bill 416. The Florida League of Cities has put an alert out for the cities to begin contacting our legislators. Since this is a legislative priority for the city council this year, I have engaged, the city manager has engaged Madison Government Affairs, which is the lobbyist for the city that we currently have under contract, to begin engaging the legislatures and the potential partners to fight this bill. You can see the attached legislative alert that's been attached to the city manager's report. Basically, what the bill is proposing is any utility relocates in the city right-of-ways for projects would be, have to be funded by the cities versus now it's funded by those utilities companies if we do a project. So it would be quite expensive for the city if this bill passes. In the health clinic, research and discussion, Courtney has partnered with the city of Cocoa Beach and Eden Harbor city managers to release an RFP for the health clinic services. This will allow us to ensure competition and explore all possibilities as far as the health care for our city employees. The city's consulting broker, which is the Garing Group, has prepared this RFP and will bring back the results to the city council after completion, and this is sort of the joint effort with the other cities to help hopefully reduce our health insurance costs by partnering with, through health clinics and things of that nature with our other cities. Health care is a big expense to our, to our city. As far as action items this evening, there's none at this time.
Thank you. Any comment or questions to the city manager?
I would just comment that I'm really glad that we have hired that lobbying firm, because, you know, it's really good that they can step in for this now.
Important, I know a lot of action happened in the last two days on this bill, so it looks very favorable. Yes, sir. Any further comment? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to, with permission from council, to move up to Item 10 and 11 at this time, so I have no objections. I'll take 10 first. Discuss, take action on the results of a request for qualifications for management operation of the city skate park. Carrie?
Thank you. In March, we came before the city council to request permission to put out an RFQ to solicit individuals or businesses to propose the management of our Satellite Beach Skate Park. Our intent was to improve the conditions of the skate park, making it more inviting for skaters to come down from our area and also from our little middle region in central Florida. We had two applicants. One came from California, he's a, was a professional skate park municipal manager. Didn't know there was such a thing. And the other one came from a local individual, Mark Quavland. A committee of four city staff met and reviewed both proposals and have indicated that we feel that the city council would be best served if we could enter into a contract with Mark Quavland for management of our Satellite Beach Skate Park.
Thank you very much. Discussion from council.
Who was on the reviewing committee?
Jennifer Howland, myself, Kathy Hansen, and also a guy named, oh, Brad, Brad Hodge. Excuse me, Brad Hodge.
How would the Action Park Alliance actually place themselves here if they had the contract?
In talking to them in their California area, when they manage a skate park, they require the municipality that they're working for to pay all the salaries, pay the electric and pay the heavy-duty maintenance. I spoke to them about here, and they would require that the city would provide them a pro shop, probably pay for staffing, although he didn't indicate at what level. So I'm not sure the California Park Alliance would be our best fit, because it's, he's, if we were looking at the two between, one is a solid business venture who is there for business, and the other one who has a more of a community desire to improve the skate park.
So it would be local employees with long-distance management, is that correct?
That is correct. Well, I don't know if it'd be, well, I guess it'd have to be local eventually. I don't know who Park Alliance would bring down, but it would be long-distance management. He indicated with his California businesses, he visits the sites once every six weeks.
And these were the only two responses that you received?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I don't know what to say. This is the most casual proposal that I've ever seen, and I really have concerns about fly-by-the-seat-of-the-pants kind of decisions. This short introductory document made it very clear throughout that he makes decisions very quickly, gets up and does them, and doesn't think much about them. I find that troubling. I am glad that the person is local and that he knows our city and that he has tremendous enthusiasm for this. Given the choices that we have, I'm going to support this, but I hope that this individual gives me a comfort factor as time goes on and gives me a sense that he really is taking this seriously, which I didn't sense from his write-up.
Thank you. Counsel further?
How long is the contract, sorry, I was just gonna, how long is the contract we're talking about?
If I'm not mistaken, let me just inject, because I've talked to Courtney for quite a while on this, and I've talked to Carrie on it. So I think the step is next, is to put the contract together that they're gonna do, which I think is gonna make clear to us how it's gonna be managed and what's gonna occur there. I had some, not concerns, because I know the individuals, I think they do a really good job, but I think it's to a point that we need to get a contract to see what their intent is, what the rec department's idea is also, and it's down in paper, so that it covers a gamut of people. And one of my concerns to her was, we have this skate park that we put together years ago, and it's been successful until it got, I think, probably more so outdated than anything. And I want to make sure that a parent with a six- and seven-year-old kid feels as comfortable going there as a 17-year-old kid skating, and I think if we do that, we're gonna have a successful skate park again. And I asked her, where is that? And the comment was, that's what we're gonna write up in the contract to make it work. So to me, this is a step. I understand where you're going, because I read it and go, okay. If I didn't know the party and I saw the California one in this, you know, it wouldn't weigh the scale. But knowing that I've talked to Courtney a lot, and I've talked to Carrie a lot on it, that I think the contract and what their duties are gonna be at that park is what we really need to see. So, and I think that contract will have the, and so forth.
And I just like that, with some of the concerns. I mean, obviously, you know, not knowing them that well, I'd hate to say, yeah, let's get into a 10-year contract and then be stuck, whereas we could say, we got into a 1-year contract, and if it doesn't work out, we have a way out. It is more what I was kind of getting at, is how long is this? But I do see, it says action is just to develop a formal contract, so I guess that's really all we're doing so far.
Yeah, and that's the way I read this, too, was just, let's get a contract together and see how this whole process works type of thing. I mean, I've known, you know, Mark Quavlon since he was really small, and I've known his father for equally as long. I mean, it's good family, it's good hard-working family and that sort of thing, so I think it will be a good match, but, you know, the critical part is, of course, to get it all in writing and that sort of thing, and I think that's where we are, and if we can at least do that and then move forward or not. But, I mean, I think you've got a good group of people that are coming to you with some interest in doing the right thing, so.
I just, you know, I don't know the parties involved here, but I like the fact that you're from here. I think it's, it says a lot for the commitment that, you know, you're gonna have to our skate park. It was the first one in the county, it was one of the first ones in the state, and it's old, and I think that there's a lot of potential to do things there, and I hope that, you know, when we move forward, you know, we can make those things happen for our, for our kids, so.
Further comment before we open up for public? This time, I'll open up for public comment on Agenda Item 10. Floor is open. Here and now, bring it back to council.
Do you want this as a motion or just an action item to move forward?
Let's do it as a motion.
I'll make a motion to.
Right, he has a motion.
Okay, to approve city staff engage Mark Quavlon to develop a formal contract for skate park management services.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Vice Mayor Montanaro. Further questions from council? Carrie, I have one. Timeframe that you feel, I'm sure you'll get with Jim on this, too, on this contract before it is back to us.
I would think a couple months.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have nothing for the question. Any further questions? Fourth call for a vote. Ms. Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Gino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Carrie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure you can stay right there. We're moving on to Agenda Item 11. Discuss, take action on piggybacking Clay County's bid for Patrick Air Force Base soccer field lighting.
Little history, we call it history. The football field at Patrick Air Force Base, right along the South Patrick Edge, was, is being leased to the city of Satellite Beach for five years for maintenance and utilization by our sports leagues. This was an important movement on the city's behalf, because we are planning on putting the stormwater project at De Soto in the field area, which would just relocate several of the sport groups that need that area. We would move them up to the football field. That football field has Musco lighting, it's a bit on the aged side and needs a lot of work. The M Gay, who has given us the proposal to repair those lights, is under the Clay County bid, so using that as a piggyback, I would suggest, recommend that we use M Gay for the repairs for the football lights at Patrick Air Force Base.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, what was the relationship with Clay County?
We would piggyback off of the Clay County bid. It's, there's state bids that we would, could use, you know, for state-related things, and Clay County has already done all of the bidding for services, and M Gay is, is the company that was awarded the service contract under Clay County, so we piggyback off of them. Keeps us from having to go out to bid again. And M Gay also is the electrician company that Musco uses, and these are Musco lights, so we're pretty glad, too, to be using electrician that uses, that works on Musco lights.
These are the same type of bids that we do when we buy our police vehicles, too. We piggyback on somebody else's, somebody else's bid. You know, they are the contractor that fixes Musco lights, so, you know, anytime you have somebody that's used to working on these things, that's a good thing, because if you bring somebody in that doesn't know the products, it ends up running into problems. So I'll make a motion to, okay, I'll make a motion to approve a bid from M Gay Contractors, yeah, Contractors Incorporated to provide repair services in the amount of $16,688 to sport lighting at the Patrick Air Force Base football soccer field and piggyback off the Clay County bid.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. I have a question on it. We are still in negotiations with them, I hope, to get this contract to 20 years, correct?
I checked with Lead on that last week, two weeks ago. They have the same fiscal year as us, so they were winding down their fiscal year and fiscal year, and they were not gonna start any kind of motion on that until they got their fiscal year behind them, and so they'll be doing that now, and they had indicated it was 15 years.
Okay. And so, we are working on it, though.
Oh, yes, yes.
They understand our point of view?
Yes.
So I talked with Sean Wallen, who is the Public Affairs Director of Patrick Air Force Base. He is the person who communicates directly with the general, and, you know, he was at our League of Cities meeting last Monday, and, you know, he definitely indicated that we are looking to move forward and continue to partner, especially on this, so unless you had a different conversation with him.
No, I, I.
I think he was pretty positive.
Yeah, I mean, I, yes, and I, here's my other question, let's get, 16 grand, I have no problem with there, because I think the advantage to the community is great. My problem is, at some point, without the extended contract to 15, we've gotta be careful of what we do there. I mean, this is great, I mean, yeah, I have to tell you my idea on lights, but, you know, I think there's a point when, we've gotta get that agreement if we're gonna put the restrooms and do the other.
Yeah, we would not, we would put brick and mortar down there unless we had the license to do, the license on that.
Any further questions, council? Open for public? This time, open up Agenda Item 11 for public comment. Here and now, back to council. Any further council comments? Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. With council's permission, Chief, are you here for Agenda Item 12, the ALS Trust?
Yes.
Okay, with permission, could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Move that one up, so.
Make him wait.
Yeah. Okay, at this time, we're gonna use Agenda, we'll move on to Agenda Item 12. Discuss, take action on the ALS Trust Agreement. Thank you, Chief.
Real quick, I, in your packet, I, is.
Now, you know you have to turn that microphone. Thank you.
You're welcome. In your packet is the request for expenditure out of the Advanced Life Support Trust Fund for the total amount of $5,800 to pay for continuing the education for our department personnel by a company called Emergency Medical Consultants. Let me just, the background on this is, as we move forward in our community paramedic program, we look at the natural skill sets that paramedics have working in the emergency environment, and now we're looking at what skill sets probably may need to be shored up or refreshed on when they're working in this different environment, because now we're dealing with chronic conditions, looking at long-term care plans as opposed to episodic issue and just fixing a quick emergency. So we went through and did basically a gap analysis of what our current skill sets are and where maybe we, some areas where we can shore up on, and we've asked this company, who we have done business with before, they provide our advanced cardiac life support education, our pediatric advanced life support education, and we've asked them to look and develop a program specifically for Satellite Beach. And so this is what we have in front of you. Because this is new training and it's an enhancement for a new program, I felt that the ALS Trust Fund was primed for this, and so I'm asking for a $5,800 expenditure from the Advanced Life Support Trust Fund. And just so you know, I believe the audited balances of that trust fund is just slightly less than $19,000.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve $5,800 from the ALS Trust Fund to pay for a 40-hour community paramedic education program.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Councilman Osburn. Discussion?
Yeah, I would just say, I think this is terrific, and every time I see you guys going out for more training, I applaud you. You know, I think your department just does a fantastic job, and we're all so grateful for you.
And I go back and talk about, you know, Melanie and Eric Tippin specifically, how they have really made this huge impact, and we have some other things that has come through on, on our community paramedic program that probably in the next couple of meetings, we'll be making some announcements to you that will probably make Mr. Breimer jump up and dance.
I want to see.
Oh, no, I actually think he might.
Write music, you got it.
Because if it hits one area of the Seafall Program, that's always been a nemesis for us, and that is transportation, and we believe we have a solution that is off the charts, so.
Thanks, thank you. Um, let me say one thing, too, is I had someone who attended one of your events in the station yesterday, you did or something, and I think I stopped by today and told you that, and the person walked away and just said, I can't believe the city does all that stuff. I mean, it was, you know, to somebody from outside, it was just, I thought it was a fire department, so.
Yeah, if you want, just to fill in the blanks on that, so as part of our process with the community paramedic program, is we established what we call, we basically created a program called the Satellite Beach Senior Care Network. And really what we're doing is, we're doing case management for each one of the, our patients or clients that we have. I think yesterday, our coalition that we had, we had 28 people show up for the coalition meeting to do case review. This was representing, I believe, four different home healthcare companies, two hospice, durable medical equipment. The VA was represented this time, and the VA was, I'll use the words, wanting to know why this wasn't being done in every city in Florida and why not Brevard County, and I said, well, that's Satellite Beach for you. And then we had some other players who came to the table yesterday, and out of that group, I would say 40% of them were new, and, you know, and they're seeing what's going on, they're seeing what's happening, they're seeing the synergistic impact that's going on, and I, and we're, not only were we talking about problems, we're talking about success stories, and we're able to present a new success to them each time, so at the end of the day, everybody realizes. And we're, we're operating in a pseudo unofficial and accountable care organization, and we are working to, and these people are coming to the table, where we find a gap, and there's somebody in this room, in that room, in that meeting, that can fill that gap, and that's what we're doing. We're plugging, we're plugging resources. We're plugging, we're plugging resources here to needs here, and this has really been a connected dot game. That's really what's been happening, so.
Thank you very much.
Don, last month, I was at the Florida League of Cities Board Meeting, and I was talking to the Executive Director, Mike Sittig, about this particular program, community medic program, and obviously, it's being enhanced now, but this would be a great scenario to put together a little article and submit it to the Quality Cities Magazine, because it's...
I think so also, and not in the context of, you know, of course, you know, we're Satellite Beach, and we believe, you know, we're always number one, and that's the way it'll always be.
Well, Mike suggested it.
Right, right. No, yeah, absolutely.
It's kind of receptive. It's putting something together.
And what's happening is that we've been able to take a theoretical model and now flesh it out and put it into practical application. And I, and now is the time, I do believe, for us to be able to say, "Hey, look, this is what we're doing. It's not a one-size-fits-all, but all these modules are plug-and-play. What do you need? Do you have this issue here? This is how we've handled it," you know, and then let each, you know, each city, but they need to have a framework. And I think that, I truly believe that we're at that point, that that type of presentation would be absolutely spot-on, because I think we've gotten to the practical application.
Well, there's receptive people out there that are looking for the information, because I talked to a few other people, too. I think it's a great program.
Thanks, Chief, very much. Any further questions from council before we open up for public comment? This time, open up Agenda Item 12 for public comment.
I'm Jake Fine, citizen. I can only parrot Councilwoman McGaw's comments. We have a fantastic fire department, we have fantastic, every kind of department in Satellite Beach. Our only shortcoming is not in Satellite Beach, but it seems that the county or the hospitals can't keep up with the advances that Satellite Beach is making with all technological advances. Satellite Beach, I never fail to brag about our fire department, police department, et cetera, no matter where I am, whether I'm visiting in Miami or sitting in a waiting room at Home Regional or whatever. But anyway, we have a fantastic city, and it's thanks to you all, thanks to our citizens, and thanks to all department heads and employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Any further public? Hearing none back to council. Any further comments from council?
Yeah, I would just ask, Mark, is this an offshoot of your SEFAL efforts that you initiated?
Do you want to answer that one, Don?
No.
I mean, yeah, I'll let Don do it, and then I'll talk, yeah.
So I, the question is, is this an offshoot from the Communities for Lifetime Initiative? And I would say, not only is it a, yes. The SEFAL program is really a set of philosophies that we are looking at to make this community livable for all ages, with specificity given to seniors. And we have so many different things that fall under that umbrella, from the Stop By and Say High Program, the Recreation Department, and, and so the answer to that question is yes, it is an offshoot of it. And I think that at the end of the day, that when it's all said and done, if the state went back and looked at what they envisioned out of SEFAL, this would be the program. That, that's just the way I see it right now, and I think that the state looks at it that way also, too.
Good. And just to follow, Don and I have really collaborated over the years, not so much on what he's working on now, but just on the initial part of this, which was really nice to see. We had, we had several cities buy into the whole concept, and I, and I think part of what happened, Lorraine, is that the economy went like that, and a lot of this stuff just stopped. And he's picking up the ball now and running with it when other municipalities are still figuring out what kind of ball they want to play with. And, and so it's, it's, you know, to his credit, he's been kept, kept it moving, but it's, it's, it's not taken off in other cities, and I think it's partly because of just, people don't really know what to do with this one.
Well, and there's a lot of reasons, and, you know, one of the things, and this is my bragging about city council, I said to them, I says, you know, "For, for a fire department and for a fire chief," this was the, this was my direction from council, do good. There wasn't a question about, well, you need to hit this financial market, we had to be very good fiscal conservative, you know, as we do this program, but our goal was to do good. And so there's some agencies that may be wanting to get into it because of a financial, that they see that there's a reimbursability there. That's not there for a few more years, that's just not happening. But what I, what I liken is this, in the 1970s, firefighters were just firefighters. They did nothing else. Then firefighters started becoming trained to do CPR, and then we started adding this and adding this and adding this. And the analogy right now is that community paramedicine is that, is the, is the next major innovation of where the fire and emergency services are going. This is a, this is not a passing fancy, this is going to become part of the core, and I suspect that in five to 10 years, I would say probably 40% of all departments will be involved in this in one degree, shape, or form. That's what, that's kind of where I think we're at.
And Don, have you given your briefing to the Chairman of the FCC yet?
So on October the first, yes. The answer to that question is the federal FCC and to the Chairman of that, my, our presentation was on October the first at the Mayo Clinic in Jacksonville. It was a, probably about 150 different people who were there representing. We did have a couple congressional representatives that were there, Senator Rubio's office was represented, and healthcare agencies. We did the presentation in a, and I basically had about a 30-minute, you know, spiel, and what trans, what came out of that was a recognition that for all the other healthcare providers that were in the room, they were hospital-based, clinical-based providers, they never once considered that the paramedic side of the house was a solution to a problem. It, it was, it was almost as if, you know, they had just discovered that the world was round. And so it, there was really great dialogue that occurred, you know, the FCC, that was kind of an odd duck for us to be presenting before them, but they were looking at our innovative way of how we're doing the telemetry and telemonitoring piece with the wireless blood pressures on cuff, and they were very impressed over the fact that we did this on a shoestring budget and utilizing off-the-shelf technology from Best Buy. So that was, that was quite enlightening for them, so.
Any idea of potential consequences from that?
You know, I'm sometimes a terrible read on this, because I, I sometimes think people are more enthusiastic than they may have been. I, good dialogue, and I think at the end of the day, recognition. And so the next time somebody has a conversation and they hear about community paramedic, they can remember a time, oh, I remember that city that was doing that, let's, let's call them, you know, and I think what will end up happening is that we'll be paving the way for everybody else at some point in time.
Just, just one last thing, that goes back to what we had originally talked about. We kind of reverse engineered this thing, and we were doing this before the economy went south. And one of the analogies that he used to use was, "I've got, I've got a lady laying on the floor in kale, and a lady laying on the floor in carissa, and I've got a heart attack going on, and I've only got so many resources to spread around, and how do I maximize these resources?" So that's part of what the SEFAL did was, it was before the economy crashed, we were looking on lowering costs, so he didn't have his people out all over the place at different times, so we would try to lower resident costs, hospital operating costs, because if somebody breaks a hip, it's $35,000 just right out the door, and that sort of thing. So that's kind of the other, we did a lot of reverse engineering on that sort of thing, just to try to, if we could educate the public that they need to do this, that, and the other to keep themselves healthy, then he can work on his cardiac times of three minutes and that sort of thing, and it really frees up his people to save lives versus going in and picking up somebody that shouldn't have fallen to begin with, that they had just known that they shouldn't have been falling down to begin with. So it was, there was a lot of reverse, because he and I used to go back on the road back-and-forth a lot on this stuff, to different conferences, and there was always that, some of that reverse engineering stuff, but it kind of all came together, and I think you're still working some of that, and I think that's why these companies come to see you, is some of the reverse engineering.
Yeah, I think that also, and just, you know, to kind of build on this, and then, you know, the, in 2003, we were here because we needed resources, because we had double calls going on at the same time.
Yeah.
Today, it is not uncommon for us, two or three times a week, to be triple or quadruple stacked. That it is, we have, the what's been happening, I mean, we're just getting busier. And, and so, again, you know, as we begin looking at further expansion of the community paramedic program, my goal is so that I'm using my resources in the right place, because we can just use the day before yesterday, or was it yesterday? I don't remember, a collision on A1A with major entrapment, you know? I mean, we already had other calls going on, it just so happened that everything was getting wrapped up from other calls when this one came in, but it was, but the call that they were on ahead of time before this call was really a community paramedic call. We, you know, but we had a, you know, three-person engine crew there, because that was what was available right then and there. So as we, I actually think we're going to be running into a resource challenge again, and the community paramedic is going to be designed at expansion to minimize that impact and to be ahead of the power curve.
What, what do you attribute the increased calls to?
Cell phones. I, 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 the, the community is the same static population, give or take a percent. I think it's a combination of a variety of things. One is that the community age cohorts are getting older. Mr. Fergus and I are working on some very interesting data right now and looking at the percentage of our population that's 95 and older and living alone. And so I, we really believe that the majority of it is because the aging community, and then I think the next part of it is, is a overall, I, this is sometimes unpopular to say, there is an overall decline in the healthcare industry. What we get in quality is not what we got 10 years ago. And I, and I say that, and it sometimes irritates, because they talk about all these advancements, but when you don't apply those advancements, then it's not all that good, and, you know, and the system is clogged. I don't know, it's a clogged pipe.
And I'll give you another piece of data, just last comment I'll make, and it's as good as it gets right now, so when I say this, you'll get this. Right now, let's say, let's say you need a caregiver. Typically, if you look through the resources, there's seven people available to give you some type of caregiving, okay? Now, over the next 20 to 30 years, when the baby boomers begin to age, that ratio drops down to one to three. So there's going to be, it's going to magnify the resources in all different ways, so it's going to go from seven to one, down to three to one. So it's going to get tighter with the availability, as people live into their 90s, there's not going to be as many people around to take care of them.
And when there's not competition, there's, the quality declines.
Dramatic.
Is what it is. It's, it's business one-on-one.
Yeah.
So, anyhow.
Well, Mark, kudos to you for igniting the spark that kind of set this in motion.
Well, thank you, Lori, it's been a lot of fun, and I'm glad it's paying off, at least locally anyhow. Hope we can do more with it in bigger ways, but thank you for that.
Any further comments from council? Here, Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Chief, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go back now and pick up Agenda Item 7, discuss take action on the Fraternal Order of Police Contract.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's before you this evening is the FOP contract that's been negotiated with the members of the bargaining unit. The agreement that was reached was a new three-year collective bargain agreement from the members of the Fraternal Order of Police Union. The current contract that you have before you includes the compression pay plan that was budgeted in fiscal year 1516, and it also includes a three-year contract with no opening clauses. Previously, you know, they would, there was always an opener every year, so this will, you know, save on the labor attorney and having to meet every, every year for the next three years. The changes that you see in the contract have been highlighted in red, and the contract before you this evening has been ratified by the members of the union, and the contract is attached, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? At this time, open up for public comment Agenda Item 7. Hearing none. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the FOP contract as submitted and ratified by the membership.
Second? Motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, seconded by Councilman Breimer. To Courtney's staff, you guys, thank you very much, you know, for putting this together, and I'm glad, hope everybody, it works out fine for everyone. Further discussion?
Nope.
Good. Did I open up for comment? I'm sorry.
You did.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw? I'm voting no, and I want the minutes to reflect that I'm voting no because of the errors in the contract.
As in grammatical?
No, there's some substantive stuff.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. For one, moving on to Agenda Item Number 8, discuss take action on the IAFF contract.
Thank you. This is a very similar agreement to the FOP contract. Includes the compression pay, was the major change, that was budgeted in 1516. It also includes a three-year with no openers, and it's before city council for their approval.
Thank you. Discussion from council? Hearing none, this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 8. Hearing none back to council? Do I motion?
Motion to approve IAFF contract as submitted and ratified by the membership.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, seconded by Councilman Osburn. Further discussion? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw? I'm voting no, and I want the minutes to reflect that I'm voting no because of the errors in the contract. Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, discuss take action on an interlocal agreement between Brevard County and the city establishing a centralized addressing authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an interlocal agreement between the city of Satellite Beach and Brevard County to basically host the 911 emergency addressing system, so if there's a street that needs to be named or an address that needs to be given, there's a central database at Brevard County. The county is currently handling this for us, however, they have passed the cost along to the city for doing this for the city. So the interlocal agreement includes the amount of $2,931.61 that would be paid out of the general governmental services budget to allow the county to continue and to provide the service for the city of assigning those addresses for the 911 addressing system. And once again, I'll stand for any questions. The agreement has been attached.
Comments from council first? No? Question here. So at some point, you need the service. I mean, obviously, we're going to get to a point built that is at worth $3,000.
Well, anytime there's a street name, you kind of, they maintain the entire database. So, you know, I don't know if there would ever be a need where we wouldn't ever, were totally built out, we would never need them to provide that service for the city. So I think there would always be the need for this centralized database. We could do this in-house, but it just causes a whole other, you know, large function for the city, probably software, everything to track that, and because, you know, you're assigning addresses for emergency situations as well, so. I, I think, I think looking at what you're saying is, someone like us is that far built out, it would be nice if we got to a point where, is there a by-piece cost? In other words, okay, we get a new address, is there, can we, will the county charge us $100 for that as opposed to having to pay $3,000 every year if we go 10 years without ever changing an address or adding a street? You know, I understand the cost-wise is kind of a...
Well, we're, I don't think we're there right yet, because, you know, we've got 100 acres that eventually is going to be developed. This is an ongoing agreement that we have with them, and, you know, until we're built out, you know, we're probably still going to be relying on this interlocal agreement, so, you know, I don't see any reason why we...
Well, and I don't think there's any alternative.
We really don't.
We really don't have any alternative.
I mean, that's what I'm getting at, there's really no other alternative to...
Because doing it in-house would cost us more money than $2,900.
Right.
Because the county factored this on population, and yes, Satellite Beach probably isn't going to get, keep them as busy as Palm Bay or some city like that.
Absolutely.
But we, we'll still have a need for that, you know, until, until we just don't assign any more addresses, which I don't think will be ever, you know? I think there'll always be something changing, knockdown building. So there is really no other alternative, unless we want to, we just think that's a pretty good deal if they're going to bill us for something, that the $2,900 would be a lot cheaper than if we brought that in-house and tried to do it in-house.
Thank you. This time, open up for public comment on this Agenda item. Laura's open. Here are none, back to council.
I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the city and Brevard County establishing a centralized addressing authority.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, a second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Here. Yes, yes. I'm here, too. Yes.
Councilwoman Gough?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was, I was reading, and all of a sudden, I heard my name.
Have another drink there, Mark.
Yeah, really.
Okay, if my order is correct, we're moving on to Agenda Item 13.
Try talking more directly.
If my order is correct, we're moving on to Agenda Item 13, which is Agenda for Proposed Regular Meeting November 4th. Please, as normal, take a look at it. Anything you'd like added, please get with the staff in due time. I'll give them enough time to get it on here if you need some change. Okay? Here are no other comments on that. Moving on to Agenda Item 14, adoption of minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the unapproved minutes of the September 16, 2015 meeting as submitted.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gough?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Any further?
Yes.
Yes.
You noticed that this evening, I just voted no because of errors.
Mm-hmm.
I am not tired, I am weary of this. There is no excuse for the quality of some of the documents that come before this council. I have volunteered time and time and time again to look at these documents before they go into the packet. But I'm always told, no, we don't have time for that. But we have time to get these in the packet and make us look foolish. I'm tired of it. And I think that I'm just asking for some guidance from the council to the staff as to whether or not they should allow enough time to send me these documents to catch the errors, and you know I see the errors. And stop having everything be such a last-minute rush that there's no time to get it right.
Your point taken. I'll discuss it with Courtney, if you don't mind going in that direction, if you want in that direction.
Well, I know what, I know what she's going to say to you. She's going to say to you what, what I've been told time and time and time again, and nothing gets resolved.
I think the action first that I'd like to take from council is to let me speak with Courtney on this, and let her give me or make proposal to us on how she can handle this to have it a better packet to us.
All right.
Okay? And again, I think one of the things I've always said is, I know things could happen at the last minute sometimes, but it's like what I just said before on the other agenda, we have to give them enough time for these items so that they can be read. If it's a very big agenda, maybe we need to look at the agenda and go, well, there's a couple items on that agenda that really doesn't need to be on it for this time, because it's not critical. And the other things then have more time for people to spend on. But, well taken, I will speak to Courtney on it.
Mr. Mayor, I would just say that if there's not enough time to bring it here properly, then, I mean, take it off the agenda and put it on for the next meeting. I mean, really, I mean, unless it's something, we have to get it approved by, you know, something that's time-sensitive, we have to do it at that time. But, I mean, if not, I'm not opposed to someone dropping something off the agenda simply just because they didn't, if they don't have enough time, there's no need to rush into that, and we'll just put it on the next agenda and move on from there.
I will meet with Courtney, let her give the presentation on how she will handle this, the packets, and that correctly. Is that suitable? Okay, thank you. Any further business? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff. Andy, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.